Call to order, City of Cannon Falls, City Council meeting for Tuesday, July 23rd. If I could get a roll call, please. Gesmi.
Here.
Groot.
Here.
Kupson.
Here.
Johnson.
Here.
Cronenberger.
Here.
Lundell. Montgomery. Here. Please rise for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
If I could get an approval of tonight's agenda.
So moved.
Motion from Ryan.
Second.
Second from Diane, all those in favor.
Aye.
Opposed. Carries, we will skip public input, nobody's signed up here tonight. Brings us to consent agenda. Consent agenda items may be adopted under one motion as presented or may be removed for discussion and resolution as council business. Item A, just incorrect claims for the accounting period ending July 18th, 2024. B, meeting minutes for June 18th, 2024 work session. C, meeting minutes for July 2nd, 2024 city council meeting. Item D, approving the tennis court agreement with Cannon Falls School District. Item E, Resolution 2770, accepting a monetary donation of $100 from the Cannon Falls Library Foundation. Item F, approve the stump grinding quote. Item G, approve sending vehicles to auction. Item H, approve drinking fountain repairs. Item I, Resolution 2771, accepting a monetary donation, $8,045.60 from the Goodhue County to the Fire Department. Item J, Resolution 2772, accepting a monetary donation of $1,200 from the Cannon Falls Fire Department Relief Association to the Police Department. And item K, Resolution 2773, accepting a grant of $2,200 from Goodhue County Health and Human Services to the Parks Department. Is there anything that the council would like pulled down? Hearing none, I would accept a motion to approve the consent agenda.
So moved.
I got a motion from Gesmi, a second from Lundell. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Carries. Brings us to council business. Item A, so in accordance with the city code, as mayor, I am challenging our passing of Resolutions 2767, 2768, and 2769 regarding the conditional use permit and variances that were awarded to Dollar General. In the email that was forwarded along to everyone, I'm challenging the city council's recent approvals because we are not following the guidelines that are currently in place for Cannon Falls. I disagree with allowing multiple variances, the parking stalls and the setbacks, to a project that involves new construction. Dollar General has not proven to me that this project is dealing with any unnecessary hardships or peculiar conditions to the property that warrant an exception to our zoning guidelines. So I cannot support this project as it sits before us. Again, I know we had discussion. A new build, I know we had some people who'd come and talked like on the county level. I just found that there was not a willingness to compromise from Dollar General, that they only had three building project styles that they could follow and they couldn't make any of them work. And to me, that says that their project and this property don't match. Because I would ask the council that if, this is also a residential zone, if somebody were to buy that land and come to us with a house and their building plan and say, I only have three houses, only three options to build, and I need to ask for something, would we allow that? So, just thought that I would bring this back up, make it the challenge so that we get a second chance to look at it, think about it, maybe have the discussion again, and see if this is something that we want to stop or something that we want to allow to move forward. Any questions or discussion from the council?
No, I agree with you, Mayor. I, from the start, I've not thought it was a good fit, and I don't think we should do it, but that's me.
Any other questions from the council?
First question to our attorney, on the June 18th meeting, we approved the conditional use permit and the two variances. Was that vote negated then somehow?
Councilmember, the decisions in June were not negated, per se. What transpired and which might be a little confusing in this process is that the approvals occurred over the course of two meetings. So what transpired in June were motions to approve the CUP and the two variances, with also direction to draft resolutions, which would then come back to the council and did come back to the council at the July 2nd meeting for consideration and approval. They were in fact approved at the July 2nd meeting. So.
I was gonna say, my packet has them listed as resolutions that we approved.
That may be the case, but that's not the actual actions that were taken. No actions other than motion approvals were taken in June. And this proceeding, this reconsideration is done under, actually not the city code, it's done by city charter. And city charter, Section 2.05 subdivision 3 specifically references the council's approval of resolutions, which unquestionably happened at the July 2nd meeting. So the mayor's ability or authority to invoke the reconsideration process did not arise until the council actually approved resolutions. Before then, there was nothing to object to, because there were no approved resolutions prior to July 2nd.
And on July 2nd, it passed six to nothing, unanimous.
There were three.
Yes, it did. Yes, it did.
No, I abstain.
I voted against it.
I abstain.
Not on July 2nd.
It was a consent agenda.
It was a consent agenda, it didn't get pulled down, it got unanimously passed.
Basically, everybody voted for it.
On July 2nd.
Under consent agenda.
Correct.
But again, that happened on July 2nd.
Yes.
Yeah.
And that's what's being challenged, the unanimous six to zero vote is what's being challenged.
Yes.
So, could you tell us, under subdivision 3, just kind of how this works? It says it needs, if upon reconsideration, five council members vote to approve the ordinance, does that mean it takes five of us to like override the veto or challenge, for lack of a better word?
The objections, the mayor's objections, we just use the same terminology from the charter for clarity, yes, you need actual five votes.
Okay.
Okay, then, I would like to speak to the issue. Dollar General, and I know, Mr. Mayor, listen to you, they do have only three building plans. When we were not sure about their first proposal, they went back, dropped the size of the building, rearranged things, talked to the railroad, and came back with a proposal that only needed two variances, the parking, which is actually not a problem.
But are they still asking for two variances?
Are you gonna interrupt the whole time?
Well, are they still asking for two variances?
Yes, that's why I was just saying, the parking and a 13.7-foot setback. Now, on August 2021, the city council granted a 37-foot variance on somebody who is asking for a lot split and building a brand-new home on a vacant lot, which is new construction, new owner, 37-foot variance that the council granted. May 2024, home destroyed by a fire, so now we've got a new building. And they're actually building a larger home than before, needing a almost 30-foot frontyard variance setback, and a little dinky one in the rear.
I'm sure you have lots of examples that will work for your argument.
We go back, one more, one more.
Go ahead.
Thank you. The new building, there again, new owner, same kind of circumstances as Dollar General. Weird lot size, therefore harder to fit things in, but the apartment building that went in had not only a spot rezoning from B2 to R4, or R3, whatever it's called, R4, and then they needed five exceptions to the zoning. They had, the R4 ordinance requires 10%, no more than 10% studios, they have 30%, minimum of 500 square foot for a studio, they had some as small as 480. It can only be three stories tall, granted them, so I let them go four stories. They did not have the required amount of parking spaces, which, you know, may or may not be needed, as we said, but same thing. And the density, in terms of the footprint of the building on the amount of land it had, they needed technically 1,970, 750 square feet, instead they had 132,609. That went through with Mr. Lundell, Mr. Gesmi, Mr. Montgomery, voting in favor of these variances for new construction. I'm not saying, and in that case, we also gave them, we waived the sewer water hookup fees, maybe $129,000, waived the permit fees, building permit, $40,000, gave them a $3.6 million TIF agreement at 3.75% interest, which means we really aren't going to see much of a tax base from them for 26 years. So this whole thing that somehow too little variances being asked for by Dollar General when the findings of fact from our attorney said, everything is in keeping, there is no problem with these variances. So I really am having a hard time understanding why, and I mean, let's be honest, this is the north side of town, we don't have anything there, we don't have much. It's a lot that's been vacant, the building that's there bumps up to the railroad, it probably is almost on the middle of the street. This is somebody who's willing to come in, they haven't asked for a dime, they're gonna upfront do all the expenses. What they do is take a vacant property that's pretty worthless, which is what we said about the Cannonball property, offer to build a business there, and add to our tax base, and perhaps give those of us on the north side of town a little option on where we can run and pick something up in a hurry. So I really have a hard time understanding this opposition.
All right. We all heard from Councilmember Johnson, I don't think it's fair to compare apples to oranges, housing versus this Dollar General. At the end of the day, it is a new build that is asking for two variances, that's why I'm challenging it. I was disappointed, I did not see the hardship in Dollar General, I did not see the ability for them to compromise, to try to find a way to fit. They said we've got building style A, B, or C, none of which fit. So square peg, round hole, they're trying to get into a spot. If they can find a different spot in town that works, great. I just don't see this as being a fit, following with the city code, challenging it, I just wanted us to take a second look after further discussion. I appreciate all the work you did, I still think all those situations are completely unrelated, they're different projects, different location, housing is a different priority, I think that the community established that, I think the Cannonball apartments have been a major success, they've proven that. So, any other questions, comments, concerns from the council?
I think they are the same thing, and I think that it's disappointing that we aren't working with them. Did anybody call them or work with them on if we really are that upset, and again, it passed six to zero? Did we talk to them about a different location? Did we ask them, you know, we really do want you here, but...
Last I heard, they had tried to come here before, and they walked away from an area because the land was, I was told, too expensive, and this lot, they were more interested in. I think that their building plans and everything would work in those other lots, it was their choice to walk away because they were just looking for a cheaper place. So, again.
So that was the last time, no one talked to them this time?
No, not that I know of.
And do we know what the estimated tax, did they give any idea of how much the tax base would be?
No.
I thought I heard $15,000, but I don't know where I got that from, so...
Is there anything we could compare that to, to make the 15,000?
Yeah, I don't remember where I got it from, so it's not a valid number, but I was just trying to understand, what type of tax base are we giving up by not allowing this? I do understand the concept of not doing variances for new builds, but I think that we need to make exemptions, which is why we have variances, and... That's my opinion.
I get it. I just, not to, but when Randy Rexigal came here and said, at county level, this stuff doesn't exist, and I think, like residential, where I live, my house is close to the property line, if there was something that were to happen, I say, hey, I need to put an addition on this side. I think variances are meant for that, and I know that there are some critics that will say, well, rules are supposed to be black and white, that's why there's variances for some of these things. But a new build on land, state highway, railroad, I did not see the inconvenience or any of these factors that said they couldn't have compromised, and maybe they can come back to the, you know, drawing board and compromise on this lot. What I'm saying is, asking for multiple variances at this point on a new build, I think deserves a second look. That's why I'm challenging it, that's why it's brought back up. The other part too, and this can lead to further discussion, but maybe as our city, I don't know if it's codes, our parking requirements, because that's one of the variances, maybe we need to look at that again. But the thing is, we're dealing with it in the here and now because it's in place, it's what we deal with. So if we have to reevaluate that, happy to do that in the future, but it's what we're dealing with right now, and that's a variance that's being requested. So, any other questions or comments from any other council members?
I was talking to a banker in town here. He basically thinks that it looks very like Cannon Falls is anti-business-like, so he's just like, what other kind of ramifications could come down from this?
Well, I hope that, again, I think sometimes these discussions turn into bigger things. What's directly in front of us, speculation of if we're open for business, that is completely unrelated to this issue. We are open for business, we're encouraging business, what I'm challenging is, this isn't the right fit. Again.
Someone brought the same thing up to me too, that we're, this is why there's no new businesses in town. Well, maybe if there was an appropriate size business in that lot, we wouldn't be talking about this.
Well, and I would almost challenge too, if what was said before, the Dollar General had looked at previous land, I believe it was on the south side of town, near the community bank, and they walked away from that because of the lot, they're the ones that walked away from an area and chose to go for one because they thought it was cheaper, and I understand that businesses would try to do that, you know, what's the best situation for them, but we're not anti-business, we didn't turn them down the first time, they walked away. So there's opportunities to come here. Mr. Lundell, Mr. Gesmi, anything from you two? You don't have to, just, just knowing if the council has anything else they'd like to say.
I do, I tend to agree with your letter, or whatever your statement. I didn't like the, I think I voted no on the June meeting for the setbacks. I just think, like you said, we have these three sizes, that's it, like, take it or leave it, like, you know, they're not, what was it, 13 feet, like, they can find a designer, an engineer, or whatever, to, or, whatever, blueprints to, they can make it work if they really wanted to, I think. So, yeah, so I didn't really, I just don't think there was a need for the variance for that, you know?
Thanks Laura for bringing my attention, but I did vote for that, and not abstain, I don't know what happened.
If it was in the consent agenda.
What I would like to say is, if, for some reason, they can adjust their darn building and make it fit the variances, there's not a cotton-picking thing, we can discuss, they can come in through a conditional use, right?
Yep.
And build it, and we can't legally be even discussing whether they can come or not, so I would, and I think I asked him, is there any way they can squeeze it down to make it fit without having to come for these variances? And then it gets back to that, we have A, B, or C, you know, and that's, it's always bothered me. I think you can, we have a contractor in the audience now, he knows how to make things fit, if they don't fit, you make them fit. So, it can be done, and I don't know why it's the headbutting, why we have to do it this way.
And this passed, they all three passed unanimously in planning, or just passed? I'm not on planning, so I don't know.
Unanimously.
Yeah, so it passed?
Well, with one abstention.
Abstain.
Okay.
I abstain.
And just, I know we keep saying that they could have come back, certain businesses have a standard that they have, I mean, that's why they don't have to ask us for money. You know, they've got the little blueprints, they've got three ways they build, that keeps their costs down, they don't have to go back and redo blueprints. What's interesting to me is, these same type of questions were asked before the apartment building went up. Why couldn't they locate to a place where they didn't have to have all of these variances? Why, you know, why couldn't they come back and redo their plan?
Again.
And I think the same thing, you know, they have...
I hear you, but...
You say there's difference between housing and business, there's not, it's new building, period.
I agree.
And variances are variances, exceptions are exceptions.
I agree.
You can't have it both ways.
Well, housing and businesses would be different because zoning and also bringing residents in here, we've talked about growth, it was one of our goal-setting for the last few years, that growing, housing, our school district numbers, we need to start growing. I think that that's been pretty established. But again, trying to keep our eyes on the prize, stay focused on the issue. It's being challenged, it's gonna be back for a vote. If there's any other discussion or questions, now is the time. Other than that, I would accept a motion to come to a vote, is it, do they have to be three separate votes again tonight?
Yes, Mayor Montgomery, I would strongly suggest that they're, because they're processed separately in the sense that they have separate standards, and I think Councilmember Lundell, you might have hit on the CUP, or the standards applicable to a CUP are different from the variance standards, so they need to be done separately and follow their separate procedural requirements.
Okay.
And, sorry if you were not done. And remind me, the conditional use permit, that did pass six to zero on June 10th, or 18th as well, right? It was just the variances that didn't pass? They passed three to two?
Steve abstained from those.
I voted no on everything but the parking, on the June meeting.
Right, one was by accident, right?
I'm just not a fan of Dollar General, either, you know?
Right, but I'm just trying to clarify, I thought that the conditional use permit passed five to nothing, it was the variances that people had problems with.
Well, Steve abstained, I said no, so it was four, one.
On the conditional use as well?
I believe you're correct, yes. The conditional use is slightly different, at that time, it was a three-fifths vote, and we had four out of five with the abstention, so then that passed, sorry. And then the variances, the setback variance was more concerning to the council.
Yeah. Okay, so the CUP was four to one?
That sounds correct, yes.
Okay. Thank you.
So with doing the CUP first, I understand what you're saying, but for me, if the variances passed, then obviously the CUP would be fine for me, but I couldn't vote for the CUP without knowing if the variances passed, does that make sense?
I think he's trying to say that the votes should go in order of the variances individually, and then the conditional use permit last?
It's up to the council.
I mean, I don't know.
Well, but...
Because if the variances pass, I don't think we have any legal reason to turn down the CUP, like Steve said, right?
Well, put it this way, if they met, if they weren't asking for those two variances, would we grant them the conditional use permit?
If they didn't need a variance?
Yeah, I think we have a choice at this point.
No, or, yes.
That I'm confused, then they don't need, if they weren't asking variances, then we don't need a CUP?
No, we would, but there'd be no reason to...
Not that there wouldn't be a reason, but you're saying we can't, then why would it even come to us for a vote? I'm confused.
Yep.
Yep, and Councilmember Cronenberger, excellent question, I think the most reasonable way to proceed is, remember that the CUP is a use?
Yep.
It's not a variance which is dimensional.
Right.
So I think, in my thinking, the CUP is sort of the first issue, because you can't have a variance if you can't have a use.
Right.
So, and it's okay, and very reasonable, if you decide that the CUP is still acceptable. That does not mean you need to also approve the variances because they serve a different purpose.
Right.
And so, however, whichever one you want to consider first or last, they're tied together, but, you know, you can think practically about the impact of your decision on how this proceeds. Does that help?
Yeah, and that's how I understood it too, I mean, we can approve the conditional use, and to me, they're different, so, yes, that helps for me.
I'll also add, it is also incumbent, however this turns out this evening, it would be, it would place the applicant in a position of, you know, having to appeal, or accepting and changing, or not appealing, if the vote is to affirm or approve the existing... At that time, it was a three-fifths vote, and we had four out of five with the abstention, so then that passed, sorry. And then the, the variances, the setback variance was more concerning to the council.
Yeah. Okay, so the, the CUP was four to one?
That sounds correct, yes.
Okay. Thank you.
So with doing the CUP first, I understand what you're saying, but for me, if, if the variances pass, then obviously the CUP would be fine for, for me. But I couldn't vote for the CUP without knowing if the variances pass. Does that make sense?
I think he's trying to say that the votes should go in order of the variances individually, and then the conditional use permit last?
It's up to the council.
I mean, I don't know.
Well, but...
Because if the variances pass, I don't think we have any legal reason to turn down the CUP, like Steve said, right?
Well, put it this way, if they met, if they weren't asking for those two variances, would we grant them the conditional use permit?
If they didn't need a variance?
Yeah, I think we have a choice at this point.
Then I'm confused, then, then they don't need? If they weren't asking variances, then we don't need a CUP?
No, we, we would, but there'd be no reason to...
Not that there wouldn't be a reason, but you're saying we can't, then, then why would it even come to us for a vote? I'm confused.
Yep.
Yep, and Councilmember Cronenberger, excellent question. I think the most reasonable way to proceed is remember that the CUP is a use.
Yep.
It's, it's not a variance which is dimensional.
Right.
So I think, in my thinking, the CUP is sort of the first issue, because you can't have a variance if you can't have a use.
Right.
So, and it's okay, and very reasonable, if you decide that the CUP is still acceptable. That does not mean you need to also approve the variances because they serve a different purpose.
Right.
And so, however, whichever one you want to consider first or last, they're tied together. But, you know, you can think practically about the impact of your decision on, on how this proceeds. Does that help?
Yeah, and that's how I understood it too. I mean, we can approve the conditional use, and to me, they're different, so, yes, that helps for me.
I'll also add it, it is also incumbent, however this turns out this evening, it would be, it would place the applicant in a position of, you know, having to appeal, or accepting and changing, or not appealing, if, if the vote is to affirm or approve the existing resolutions.
Okay.
All right, with all that discussion, if we're ready, I would accept a motion for vote on the reconsideration of Resolution 2767, and we'll start with the conditional use permit.
Can we talk about the conditional use permit?
Absolutely.
What does that all entail? Like, why are we doing all this? Like, the, what's the function of the conditional use permit, I guess?
That included the fence, right?
Yes, Councilmember Growth, the purpose of the conditional use permit, as opposed to variances, is to allow a use that's generally compatible with the area and the zone, but requires some additional conditions to ensure that it is consistent and in harmony with the surrounding area. So that's where you're able to put the fence condition on for health, welfare, and safety on the railroad. You have more flexibility when you have a conditional use permit to put those kinds of conditions on.
So like them, so like the front of the building, I'm trying to think of which street it would be, I'm not very good at streets, is quite close to the sidewalk, isn't it? I'm just asking anyone. I thought it was...
Are you looking at the setback on the south side there?
Probably, because that was really close, wasn't it?
Yeah, I think they pushed the building forward to reduce...
Away from the railroad?
Yeah, to, to get further away from the railroad. And I don't think they called for a sidewalk on the front side, if I recall correctly.
I don't think their sidewalk included in the blueprint that we were given.
No, it doesn't look like it.
I'm getting a head shake from, from Zach.
So, if we declined the variant, so if we, if the variances didn't pass, and for some reason they decided to make a building that fit, we would have no say. But, and then we couldn't go back and say, you need to put up a fence. So if we want to say in stuff like the fence, we do need to approve the conditional use, even if the variances don't get approved, in my opinion, that's what I'm thinking.
Yes, that is a reasonable conclusion.
All right.
If the conditional use permit passes, but the variances don't, they can come back, make it fit without the variances, and the conditional use permit's still valid then, correct? Or not?
Perhaps. The way we've done this, and the way a conditional use permit works, is that the approval is tied to the plans that are reviewed and processed through the pre-existing process. So by the time it gets here, we have a set plan. Now, I think if you've got a use that you're acceptable, that's acceptable, then I think the, the process we'd have is to go back to the applicant and say, can you revise your plans? Yes, we can, here's what we can offer. And it'd still come back to you, and you would still apply, you'd still have to approve a new CUP, but it would be for the same use, and you can put those same conditions up. So there would be sort of a reboot and process. So they could eliminate the variances, you would not lose control over the site in terms of the use.
Okay.
And that's if we approve the conditional use permit?
If you approve the conditional use permit tonight, it is for everything that, that has been submitted. If you approve the conditional use permit and decide to override, or approve the objections, or vote not to approve that, one of those other two resolutions, as a practical matter, they're going to need to start again. But only with respect to the dimensional aspects of the building, not the use itself. I think you're pretty much saying, future, come back to me, we're going to approve this use, because that would be quite difficult to, to justify tonight. You'd be willing to approve the use, but next time you won't, without some kind of material difference in the plans.
All right. So, when we come to a vote, this will be voted on, similar to how it was the first time, it just needs a five-sixth to pass. We're not voting on my, the objection, we're voting on the exact same issue. So the yays and nays, it's not like double negatives, you're not saying, yes, I vote for the challenge, or yes, I vote for the... You're voting on the issue, same as we did in June and July.
That's correct, Mr. Mayor. And I would suggest a roll call vote, because it isn't a percentage vote, again, it is a unique...
It's a five-sixth, all right. Any other further discussion, or are we ready to come to a vote?
I'm ready.
Did someone make a motion?
Nope, that's, so, I would accept a motion to get us to a vote on the reconsideration of Resolution 2767, the conditional use permit.
I moved.
Motion from Cronenberger. Do I have a second from Jepson? So, roll call vote, for all those in favor.
Gesby.
Abstain.
Groll.
Is this the conditional use permit?
Yes.
Okay. I'm going to vote no.
Jepson.
Yes.
Johnson.
Yes.
Cronenberger.
Yes.
Lundell.
Yes. Didn't make it.
That brings us to reconsideration of Resolution 2768, the variance for the front setback. If we could get a motion to vote on that.
I'll make a motion.
Motion from Jepson.
Second.
Second from Johnson, and we'll do a roll call.
Gesby.
Abstain.
Groll.
No.
Jepson.
Yes.
Johnson.
Yes.
Cronenberger.
Yes.
Lundell.
No. Didn't make it.
And reconsideration of Resolution 2769, granting variance from parking stall requirements. A motion and a second, please.
So moved.
Motion from Johnson.
Second.
Second from Jepson. Roll call vote, please.
Gesby.
Abstain.
Groll.
No.
Jepson.
Yes.
Johnson.
Yes.
Cronenberger.
Yes.
Lundell.
No. Nope, didn't make it.
All right, that gets us to...
Mayor?
Yes.
I think at this, at this point, if I may interrupt?
Absolutely.
Because this is a different, we need a final decision on all three applications, and that final decision requires resolutions denying each request to end the 1599 time for consideration. So I would strongly recommend that you direct the city attorney to prepare findings and bring them back to the council for the next meeting.
All right, if you could please put together the findings after today's votes, that will be brought back. Will that be council business or consent agenda? Or just on the next agenda?
On the next agenda.
All right.
Thank you.
Thank you. All right, Chamber of Commerce, we got a chance to talk with Maggie in our work session ahead of time. The Library Board met on July eighth, if anybody would like to comment on that?
Yeah, it was not a very exciting meeting. One of our board members resigned due to personal responsibilities. Usage's about the same, and, yeah, we got a Selco Board update, which is pretty big. The Selco Board is big.
All right.
So, yeah.
Thank you. Planning Commission, July eighth.
Planning Commission met July eighth and considered a spot rezon for Bethel's Rock Church down at the O2 Event Center, and that was denied, turned them back to... I'm going to come back with more discussion on that, but as of right now, it's not, it was, was denied. That was all that was on there.
Can I think about it, in terms of that whole zoning with the religious organization? And I asked Zach about it too. Instead of spot rezoning, in which case then the event center wouldn't have legally been able to operate in the building, I guess the question I'd raise for us is, is there a reason why we don't allow religious organizations conditional use permit in B1, B2 zoning?
Is that discussion for a future meeting? Okay.
Yeah, that, that's just kind of bringing it up, and I don't know if Zach found any information from other communities.
But, let's wait till after we adjourn, and you guys can address this. EDA, July eleventh. Steve, are you, I was also absent.
I sure do, but I'm not prepared to discuss what we... Amy, can you? Oh, she's gone.
Neil, is there anything you'd like to add for that?
We talked about sale of preliminary closing of two more lots. If anybody's been by there, you see that structure of that one house, it's, it's up. There's another house, the sticks are going up on the second one. So things are moving along. We have pretty much ten lots are already spoken for. So things are moving on. I think the decision, we found out that people are willing to build some new homes here in Cannon Falls, and, which will be good for our schools, right Matt?
Oh, yes.
Steve, how many were in phase one again?
Twenty-nine.
So we've got about a third taken already, good.
Yeah.
Public Works and Park Board also met on July eleventh.
I forgot.
It's, it's... It's summertime, we understand, we understand it's summertime, there's a little bit of... Go ahead Jed. You got around the horn, you're the first one, so go ahead.
Okay, Public Works Park Board, we went over moving the drinking fountain out of the Vets Memorial, because we, it's just too far to run a water, water line, that's not tied into a sprinkler system. So we're going to move that one down to the dog park, that's in the consent agenda. Approved stump grinding quotes, and then a couple vehicles sent to auction. We also talked about the active transportation plan, that we had the summit here earlier this month, and then we're going to meet again on this Thursday with MINDA and work out a plan, whether, most likely over there in front of the school, to put some paint on the, on the highway and, and make it easier, or kind of just give a demonstration of what a crosswalk would be over by the school. It hasn't come to, the plan hasn't totally come together yet, but we just kind of reported on that. As far as my reports now, Hardwood Estates and Timber Ridge, both have, the road bases down. They're going to be pouring curb later this week. Possibly starting tomorrow, for both, both of them. As Steve said, there's a couple houses going up on, in Hardwood Estates. Timber Ridge also has foundation down for a, for a building, so progress is being made there. Fitzgerald, our construction project over here, they finally tied in sewer. I think they finished it late Friday, possibly Monday, you know, tied, tied the sewer in up on Fourth Street and Dakota there. The lift station should be getting, we've been waiting for a electrical meter and the gas service for the generator. That sounds like that should be happening here in the next week, so that lift station should go into service, and we can finally take down that sewer bridge. So slowly but surely, we are plugging along on that. John Birch Park, Blake Borough, delayed another week or so. It sounds like they're going to start mobilizing, coming into town next week. As you can see, Third Base Dugout is, got walls poured. I'm working with Doug Geisberg, we're running, there's going to be a little grinder pump for the sewer. We're actually working on that tomorrow. Hannah's Bend, we, we thought about naming it, renaming it Hannah's Swamp, but it is finally drying out. Public Works was able to, to mow yesterday. We needed to get it mowed so that the ground can dry out underneath it, it was just retaining all that moisture. We're hoping the park will probably open it up by the end of the month to rentals again for the pavilion. It, it looks like we're able to clean it up. We are seeking some quotes to get the trees removed from the flood at the different bridges and whatnot. We haven't received quotes back yet. We, we're also seeking quotes to, for cleanup, and we are too small, I, nobody's really interested. So it looks like Public Works will probably do the cleanup for Hannah's Bend and the Vets Memorial. So, and I already covered active transportation plans, so that's all I have, thank you.
All right, thank you Jed. Zach, anything from you?
It's just a reminder that Planning Commission got moved to August nineteenth, and I've already received a couple of applications, so it should be a full agenda.
All right, thanks. Bryce, Fire Department.
Yeah, call, call numbers are slightly ahead of last year, just as expected, they continue to rise year to year. Our four new hires are enrolled in fire school right now, so that's going well. Laura with the EDA has been helping us a tremendous amount with grants. We currently have a little over $500,000 out there, waiting to hear back on, so some fantastic work there.
Awesome, thank you. Lieutenant Berg?
So we have Fun Fest coming up, I'm sure somebody will be addressing that, but we're going to be there doing fingerprints with kids from five to six. And because that's the cruise night, we need to sneak away from Fun Fest to do some traffic control. Sounds like they're meeting at the high school, they're going to come through town, kind of sounds like the parade route part of the way to downtown. I'm not sure if we're going to go right through Fun Fest, or how that's going to happen, but it'd be cool, I think.
What day was that?
That's going to be Friday the sixth?
Second.
Second, yeah. So then we have Night to Unite. Last I checked, I know we had some phone calls today, but we had three parties signed up. I think we had nine last year. So the more people that want to sign up, the better, sign up soon, so we can get on the list and get a program together on how we rotate through that, getting a police, fire, and an ambulance to each party too. But remembering that the goal is for neighbors to meet neighbors. So we all had fun at the Fourth of July in the fair. Now we want the neighbors to really get to know each other, because that's what helps our community when people know each other, and what the routines are of their neighborhood, and what is suspicious to report to us, to keep everybody crime-free, so.
Night to Unite is that August sixth?
That is, August... Oh my...
I feel like it...
Yes, the sixth.
Yeah, it falls on, that's a city council night, I, maybe now is just discussion, but do any council members want to be involved in Night to Unite parties? I know we did it maybe a handful of years ago, we maybe even switched our meetings so that we could attend these events with the police force. I don't know if the council wants to reconsider if we'd ever want to do that in the future, just to be involved in the community.
I was actually going to offer to sponsor one, but...
Were you? Yeah, well, that would require action tonight to switch the date. Neil, would you be opposed to that?
No, it doesn't matter what we got.
The next Tuesday is a primary, so you can't have it...
Okay. Can't be the thirteenth?
Not twelve either.
Is it possible to post, or just cancel the sixth and have a single meeting in the month of August for the twentieth? Or are there things that we need to...
Couldn't we start the meeting at like five, so we're out of here by six-ish?
If it's good, I mean, I don't have the...
Matt, we got that. Well, no, but I don't...
Right, I know we got to, so night, maybe this year it's too late, but maybe Night to Unite, we just...
Look at it for next year or something.
And then after the meeting is over, if we want to try to make an appearance or something with our police department, if we could, but... Sorry Diane, I know you want to...
Do it earlier.
I didn't want to cause a major hassle.
You can always see what's on the agenda and decide if you're showing up.
Well, I was thinking, do we really need Diane here?
All right. We're, we're just going to leave it as is, and then after the meeting, we'll see if we can attend. Because I know it suggested the parties end by like nine o'clock or something, sundown, so, yeah. Shelly, anything else you'd like to add?
Nothing further, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you very much for attending tonight. Sarah, anything you'd like to add?
I do, I do.
All right.
Just, we are going to be starting off beginning July thirtieth to August thirteenth, filing period to run for city council. We have two, two-year terms available, and two four-year terms available. So, starting July thirtieth, bring in your $2 to file.
Two bucks, thank you Sarah. Neil?
As discussed at the work session, are we done?
As discussed at the work session, are we done with work sessions for budgetary reasons? And I can move forward with finalizing the preliminary, or do you guys want to schedule another one? September 15th is the deadline, so we would have to, a couple more meetings is all, if you wanted to talk anymore about it, otherwise I think we're pretty close.
I think the only thing that we're forgetting is like, if we're going to lower the bar cost, the restaurant.
Liquor license?
Liquor, yeah.
Local liquor license.
That would be the only other thing I could think of.
Would the council want to meet at?
We could do that in the fee schedule.
Without a separate work session?
That, that is in January, when we do the fee schedule. Or December, or January. So if you wanted to do that, and if you lower it, I think if I remember right, the total amount is like $27,000, you're not going to zero it out, so it isn't going to create a big void in the budget. But I could reduce it just a little bit in anticipation, but otherwise it won't make that big a void. So you can, you can talk about it in December, when we bring it up, you know, we always do a work session for that also, so. Or maybe you want to wait until after the new group comes in, if there's going to be a new group. I don't know who's signing up, who's not, but we could do it after the fact, and then they'll have input too, so. But we can work on that as we go along, but if that's the only thing that you guys feel is outstanding, maybe I'll put it back, put it together and present it to you guys. Probably the second meeting of August, or maybe, I don't know when the first meeting of September is, but it'll be in that vicinity, so. Are you all okay?
Yep.
All right, thank you very much.
Thanks Neil. Laura.
I'm good.
Lisa.
I'm good.
Ryan.
Good.
Derek. Diane. Steve.
No.
I just want to say thank you to the council, I know that the process is beginning for trying to find the succession plan for Neil for the next calendar year, and I hope you all filled out that email with, to get back to, what is it, SCM? SCSC. So give them the qualifications or the guidelines of what we're looking for, so the process has started. And I hope everybody had a good 4th of July. 4th of July, the fair was fantastic, the parade dodged all the raindrops, so I hope everybody's enjoying their summer. So unless there's anything else, I would accept a motion to adjourn.
So moved.
Motion from Jepson, second from Diane, all those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? We're adjourned, thank you, everybody.